Kia ora tato, it's one o'clock which would mean the start of this meeting of the Community and Culture Committee. Unfortunately, we only have seven members present. We had eight until councillor Hall retired to the back room, so if someone would like to fetch him, that would be helpful. Welcome. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Community and Culture Committee. The committee requires a quorum of eight, of which we have eight, so please consider that before anybody rushes off to the evolutions at any point, at which point in the meeting we'll have to grind to a halt. We have no speakers for the public forum. We have substantial apologies. We've received apologies from the mayor, from councillor Staines, councillor Newell, councillor Stedman, and from councillors Wiley and Gary for lateness. I'll move that we accept the apologies, seconding councillor Wilson. Any discussion? I'll put all those in favour. Those against? That's agreed. Item three, confirmation of the agenda. I'll move that the committee confirm the agenda with the following alteration in regard to standing order 2.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconding councillor Wilson, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item four, declarations of interest. Anything for elected members to add to the register at this point, aside from those amendments that were made at the meeting yesterday which will be carried over? No? In which case I'll move that we note, that the committee note the elected members' interest register and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests. Seconding councillor Benson-Pope, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Part A, reports, the Otago Museum report to contributing local authorities, March to April 2018. Dr Griffin, welcome back. The floor is yours.
Kia ora, thank you for inviting me. This is my report that comes to this committee, I think every other meeting, I think, and this report covers the period to the end of April, so we just finished just after the school holidays and the Easter period, which was a very busy period for the museum, and we had one of the busiest days in museum history actually, on the day, the Saturday of the Ed Sheeran concert, when over 3,500 people came through the doors. So I think that's a real testament to the success of that event for not just the stadium but for everybody in Dunedin, so I think it was very good. It's been a very busy period. The museum has been, obviously we opened our Tahura Science Centre back in December, and during the school holiday period it was very busy, very well attended. You can see the financial impact of the new centre has been very positive. We've generated nearly double the amount of income in a couple of months that we had previous year, so that's a very successful project from our perspective, because one of the reasons we did it, not only to create something that's really exciting for young people, but also to kind of keep the museum finances on a stable basis, because the income from that centre is critical to doing the things that we have to do, in addition to the material, the income that we get from the ratepayers of Dunedin. Just briefly, because I take it that you've read the report, key FOSI at the moment for the museum are upgrading our facilities to make sure that they're fit for purpose, so if you come to the museum at the moment you'll notice that the atrium is completely blocked off. We're replacing all of the atrium railings with something slightly higher, which is in meeting the health and safety standards. We've also put safety rails around the roof of the museum, and we are continuing our work on the sprinkler system to make sure the whole building is protected against fire. And that's a big job and that's going to take five years. We've kicked off that work now. We are doing a lot of outreach to the community, and I think a focus of this report is the outreach that we did throughout Otago and actually New Zealand. You'll see that our collaboration with the University of the Lab in a Box was outside parliament for approximately three or four days, and during that time we managed to blow up things outside parliament without being arrested, which was quite a thrill. The, I guess the key message is, things are going very well, and subsequent to this report, I will be reporting on it later, but we had the Museums Artiroa Conference earlier, well back in May, and the museum won two awards. We won the exhibition, Exhibition of Excellence in Taonga Maori for the Tahura project, which was an astonishing honour for us, because that project is a science project nominally, and it won an award for its incorporation of Maori material, so we're very, very proud about winning that award. And we also won an award for our outreach project to the Chatham Islands, which won the most innovative public programme. So we're winning awards, we're on a relatively stable financial basis, and in the run-up to our 150th anniversary, which is in September of this year, we're deep in preparation for a number of exciting exhibitions. So in about a week's time we're opening a temporary exhibition on the chills. During the Science Festival, we've got some really cool stuff going on, including a couple of, well, five concerts in the Planetarium by Anthony Tonham, and then we've got a massive exhibition opening towards the end of August called EST, which is about 150 years at the museum, and EST stands for Established in 1868, and in that exhibition we've got some of the weirdest, oldest, youngest, prettiest, sexiest things, so it's going to be quite an interesting exhibition. Happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Thank you Ian, and I'd like to thank you also for alluding me to the fact that I'd missed a story in the OTT about my favourite museum exhibit, The Animal Addicts' Rat King. Great to revisit that. And just a question, or suggestion maybe, it's exciting the stuff in here around the Taonga Poro, the musical, traditional Maori musical instruments, potentially of note to the museum that the visiting artist for the West Harbour Charitable Arts Trust who do work with schools out there this year is Rob Thoron, who is a contemporary composer and recording artist of Taonga Poro, who has, I believe, performed at the museum before, but that might be worth getting in touch with them. Councillor Lord?
Thank you Chair. Yes Ian, look, I was interested, I did read the report, and I was interested especially when you've just told us about the day with the Ed Sheeran concert and three and a half thousand people that threw in one day, I mean, I think that's all outstanding, but I was really interested to read about the fire, putting the sprinkler system in, and so I realised that your job's not just about attracting the people to the museum, but it's also about looking after and protecting what we've got. But my question's pretty horrible to even think about a fire in a museum, obviously, but does the, the risk of wetting down with things, does that damage exhibits? I mean, do you have any other ways of protecting exhibits?
That's actually a very perceptive question. The collections people hate the idea of the material getting wet, so the fire suppression system has to be quite sophisticated, and if there is a fire it's in a very, hopefully contained in a very small zone, so only a relatively small amount would get wet, and the idea there is you're offsetting the damage to a small part of the collection against protecting the wider collection by not having a bigger fire. But the collections team obviously would prefer not to have fires and not to douse the collection. But, but actually, and actually, you know, I should reiterate that the sprinkler system is across about 60% of the museum at the moment, it's only the really old buildings where it's having to be rolled out over the next five years, so it's only 40% at the moment that is, I wouldn't say it's unprotected because we have systems in place, but it's going to be better protected in years to come.
Councillor Alder?
I just want to congratulate you Ian on your outreach to the community. For me, enriching children's lives and enabling them to get excited about science is what it's all about, and to see that you're visiting preschools and getting them interested in science and the museum, and having sleepovers of which there are many, in fact you've reached over your target in naught to three, 631%. I believe that's amazing, and I think...
Is there a question coming?
I think that's, that's fantastic. One of my concerns is, I used to take four children to the museum every holidays, and it was quite a difficulty getting them out of the car and into the museum, and I'm just wondering what your feedback is from families about the parking issues there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make too big a deal of this, I think it's, there is an issue of parking around the museum, and it has not been made better by the recent changes, but we knew that was going to happen, and everybody thought the cycleway was a great idea, and that's why we, we supported it. But the fact is that we have, we are running an attraction that brings in at least 350,000 people a year, 60% of those are probably from outside Dunedin, and they need to park somewhere. So I think all we're trying to do is saying, look, we recognise, well, there is an issue, and we're looking to the council for some kind of resolution of that, whether it's satellite parking, whether it's some kind of bus system that circulates, you know, so that people can park somewhere and go somewhere else. We're not saying it has to be necessarily adjacent to the museum, but we're just saying it would be nice to have some kind of proposals coming forward.
Thank you.
Councillor Millie?
It's actually, it's a great report, thanks Ian. Just following up on councillor Lord's question about fire suppressing, have you, do you use oxygen scavengers as well, or do you just use water?
In, in different parts of the museum, we use different systems. We have, and this will probably terrify councillors, but we actually have an entire room called a wet store that's full of stuff in alcohol, and in that area you wouldn't use water necessarily to suppress fire, so we have different sorts of systems. So there are a variety, and if you wanted a report, I can certainly circulate it, because I'm not an expert, I just know enough to know that in different parts of the museum we do have different systems, and the systems we have in place in those different areas are the best that we, the best, they're based on the best advice that we've got for that particular area.
I don't think we need a report, but a cup of coffee man.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you Mr Chair, and just in respect of the mention just made of transport issues, I'm sure you're aware that there's been a suggestion in respect of inner city changes to introduce a bus loop, one way or both ways, but that would include the campus and the museum reserve on the circuit. Is that something that the museum board and yourself would support or consider desirable?
Well, I, I wouldn't dare to speak for the museum board, but certainly from the, the folks running the museum, we want to have in place something that we can tell the people who come to the museum in our marketing materials, look, if you park there there is a bus that comes every half an hour or 15 minutes or whatever, and I think that would be a genius solution.
Well, approach has been made to the regional council to cost such a service, and we've just had a response in fact, that it hasn't been passed on to councillors yet, just got it today, but the, the sort of service suggested would be a sort of 12-minute frequency, and running one direction or the other, and be relatively inexpensive, paid for by the city if we were to agree to that, and so that will be something that would meet the need one way or another.
Absolutely, and I think if you could fold into that, I mean, that would be brilliant for the cruise ship season, you know, I think that's been much needed, because obviously it's a bit of a walk from the octagon to, to the museum, and having a reliable, safe, well marketed and well visible bus would be brilliant. But then having some kind of, for the out-of-towners, having some kind of linkage of that to a satellite parking somewhere would be helpful, I think, too, so we could actually say if you park there, you can get the bus, it comes every 20 minutes or however lot often, that would be a really good solution.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Moved councillor Lord that we note the report, seconded councillor Hall. Is there any discussion? There being none, I'll put all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Thank you Dr Griffin, a pleasure as always. We'll see you in two cycles' time. Item six. Ms Gunn? The 2018 New Zealand Masters Games final report, anything you'd like to say in opening?
No, no, I'm fine, just to take questions.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor Lord?
I have on joy, page 41, it was just interesting to note that there was a, well, while you had an increase in numbers, you had a 3% drop locally, and you had a 7.8% increase from the North Island, and I just wondered, well, 7.8% of your competitors, it was an increase from 6.1, and I just wondered, are you marketing it differently, or is there something that's happening that's...
Yeah, we leveraged quite a bit of the World Masters Games, which was in Auckland last year, so we had a team go up there to market this year's games to the competitors that came to that, and we continued some of that marketing into, into that area, because we knew that there was already an interest by people who'd gone to, gone to those games in the North Island and competing. And we won't have that lovely opportunity next time, but...
Do you think that Masters Games, I notice it's not a big drop numbers-wise, but there was actually a drop in Dunedin people using the games, do you think that's because they prefer to make a weekend of it so they go to somewhere like Wanganui or Auckland?
I think some of it is people have, some of the sports have told us that people don't want to actually, local people don't always want to pay the, the registration, because they could go and play golf themselves, you know, without paying a registration to be part of something like this. So I think we have to think how we make this attractive to our local people to be part of. We've talked a lot with local, the local sports clubs about that, that sort of Minakitanga hosting concept, so being part of this as a sports person but also helping showcase the city, and we could strengthen that in our next games.
Okay, thank you.
That's an interesting question and answer, because on the basis that the registration fees are not even double the DCC funding, I mean, the local participants to a certain extent have already contributed through their rates, and they were, seen as ambassadors as well as being participants, then would you consider that you may increase numbers by having a reduced registration fee for locals?
The board hasn't considered that, I don't think we've actually put that as an option. We could take that to, to a meeting to discuss, haven't we?
Does the, when this is held up north, is this, do Wanganui supplement to the same extent the revenue in, income as we do?
I couldn't tell you either way, sorry, I, I'm not, I'm not sure whether they do or don't, it's something we could look into.
Thank you.
And what that would, what effect that might have over any profit or, you know, break-even number.
Well, I presume, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Joy, when I look at the numbers here and the overseas visitors especially, are we doing anything with our sister-city relationships and promoting the Masters Games? Because I would think whether it's in Otaru or Japan or in Shanghai, there could be a bit of interest in groups of athletes or participants wanting to venture overseas and coming to a event like this from Shanghai to, to play and, or participate in some of our events, could be quite appealing, and even from Edinburgh.
I think that's a great idea, I don't think it's something that we've really focused on, and with our relationships particularly, that the economic area of council's been developing, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us to, to strengthen for the next game, so yeah, thank you.
And I guess the other part, taking one step further, and having been on the other side and hosting the golf, I totally agree with your point about the number of golfers that decide that they'll, they'll bypass rather than register and skip that one out and taking a week off work to play, so I can totally support that, but the, the other part of that is work around friends and family, getting where somebody invites three mates together, and I know one of the teams that was featured in the curling dressed up as Donald Trumps, they, one of them was from Dunedin, and the other three came to Dunedin, and they had a great time, so looking at that friends and family type of relationship.
Yeah, I think, I mean, they're both great ideas, it's always more about how can we be different and better, so taking all those ideas, and so just to say to you that I was just using golfing as a random example.
No, no, it's quite a good, it's quite a good one though.
It could have been another sport, so hopefully the golfers do not take offense. But yes, no, I think those are great ideas, and we did have more emphasis on our marketing this year, which is why I think we managed to stop the decline, but the next step is can we, well, can we keep maintaining that, well, my ambition obviously is to keep growing it, so we'll take those back.
Obviously, a lot of thanks has to go to the Otago Community Trust for their support of the event, but has any work, do you know, been done looking for a corporate sponsor for two years' time?
There's some work happening nationally by the National Masters Games Board, looking at a sponsor to see if one could go across both games, both Wanganui and Dunedin. I'm unable to tell you at this point how far that's progressed. We'll provide an update later this year to the council.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you Mr Chair. Joy, forgive me if this has already been asked, and please tell me if it has, what's the optimum number of participants for the Masters Games?
As many as possible. I think in its heyday it had around 8,500, obviously that's a bit of a leap from where we've, we, you know, it's declined over a number of years, but look honestly, if we could create an event that would have 10,000 people in the city, that would be fantastic, and I think we could more than cope with that.
Excellent. My second question was around item 19 on page 44, just wondered why an economic impact assessment wasn't done this time round, I'm sure there's a really good reason, but I was just curious.
Oh, I think I was just agree with councillor that needed, we could do one every other games rather than every game.
So thank you for reminding me.
Joy, I just have a question around vetting, not of athletes but of sports, are there criteria that the sports, because I know the events are individually organised by their own committees and such, and I'm sure while success was almost guaranteed for the gentleman, I'm assuming, perhaps for saltwater fishing, not a lot of camaraderie comes with being the sole entrant, so does, what, what happens in that case? Do people have to make a case that there is enough interest to stage it? I'm just, more from a, more from a participant experience point of view than anything else?
There does have to be support locally for people to, for people to help promote and arrange the event, and so obviously those, but the, you know, Football South and others get involved, football and cricket get involved quite heavily in helping do that, so that is part of, of the deal, if you like, of being a participating sport, but I don't think there's a hard and fast criteria, so we wouldn't say, well, you've got five people this year, and so you can't be in, because next year that could grow 10, 15, 20, and we've seen some of the sports grow from really small numbers to bigger. Saltwater fishing could be the next great thing.
Time will tell. Any further questions? Someone like to move the report be noted? Moved councillor Hall, seconded, sorry, moved councillor Lord, seconded councillor Hall. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Lord?
The only, the only...
Speak to us, not to that.
The only comment I would like to make is that if you have any wank contestant next year for the saltwater fishing, let me know and I'll come and get myself a silver or bronze medal. I happily supply the boat to take him out to the harbour too.
Further speakers? Councillor Wiley?
I just want to congratulate the board and all the participants, because I think for many years, these events of the Masters Games have actually run at a loss, and to see a profit there, I think it's, is really good, and I know Wanganui are struggling with, you know, getting their numbers up and the participation, but I think when we look at the World Masters Games that were in Auckland, the buzz that created, I think there is a really good part of this event being a lot strongly marketed through our, across our council and across the city, but well done to everybody associated with the event, and I know there was a lot of wonderful successes and happy participants.
Further speakers? You write a reply, councillor Lord? I'll put all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Thank you. Item seven, don't move. Update on youth engagement and development, a cast of thousands. Welcome everyone. Thankfully, we're a bit thin on the ground, so there's more space than would otherwise be available at the end of this table, so as many of you want to come forward and sit, hover, welcome representatives from the Dunedin Youth Council and the Youth Action Committee who have submitted reports appended to this next one. And given that we've gone to the logistic hassle, I thought it might be, from a process point of view, easiest to, if people had questions of the youth council or the youth action committee reports, to ask them now, before we get on to the discussion around the, the youth, what was formerly the Youth Charter and now is potentially going to be called the Youth Vision. So any questions, councillors, of the two appended reports? Councillor Gary?
Thank you Mr Chair. First of all, it's really good to see you all here, I think you've lowered the average age quite substantially, which is always good, and you've increased the IQ possibly. I was really excited to see this and to see you here today. I have a couple of questions, one is around when I went into schools recently, I found that some schools are not represented on the youth council, and I also noted that some staff and students did not know entirely that they had a youth council rep, and it varied from school to school. Do you have any thoughts, any of you, about how you could improve your profile?
Pass a mic along to anybody who feels like they've got something to contribute.
So about the issue of like not having all schools represented, so every year as a part of recruitment process, we have open recruitment and people can apply, and we can therefore only accept applicants from those who've applied, so if we don't get schools applying, so for example, we don't have, we don't have Kavna, not Kavna College, Kaka Valley College, we do not have, there are a few others, yeah, we don't have Queens and St Hilda's, so those are three schools that currently aren't represented, and so we, so there was outreach attempt last year, so members of the youth council, I know for a fact, went into schools last year and made presentations either at school assemblies or to the interested year groups and attempted to like publicise the fact that we are a youth council, we do exist, so, but then the problem is some people just aren't interested, so some, some demographics of some schools might not be interested, and so, as I said, we can't actually pull people from schools when they don't actually apply in the first place.
So do you have any idea what the obstacles are to their interest?
Well, I suppose that we need to find a way that increases the, like makes it interesting for them to join, like, I hate to say it, but there's also almost like a stigma about joining the youth council, it's like we're all talking about issues that people like don't, will have interest in, and so we need to market it as the fact that if you want to be able to make a change to the community, the youth community in Dunedin, this is a way to do it, this is a way to start doing things and actually make a difference.
So is one possibility to look at the head of the youth council within a school being automatically, or you know, in those schools, a way to get that person to come on the youth council, would that be a possibility?
So like, I know most, like all schools will have a student council, and so there, I do agree there needs to be increased connection between individual school councils and the youth council, and so that, that is a valid idea, openly inviting the head of the school council at the time to join, be like, be part of the youth council, but the problem is, so currently we have, I don't know many, you know, we have two-year terms, and generally as a, heads of school councils are normally in year 13, and at the start of the year, and so the whole problem is, by the time that those schools have sorted out their school council, half a term, a whole term might be gone at the start of the year, and suddenly, all of a sudden, the representatives will only be on the council for three-quarters of a year, and by that time we have our system, people have this, our systems in place, we have things that we're running, and it would almost be more of a hindrance than a help to have them come in at the stage, like, it's great for them to be part of it, but the fact is that our operations won't change much because they haven't been able to have that input based on the way the system works.
And I do see you've got issues with consistency too. I wanted to know, what would make the difference to you coming to speak at public forum more often, because I would love to see you here speaking on a number of issues, and I know that that can be quite intimidating. How can we make that more accessible for you?
Well, like personally, I never hear that there's one on, like, I wouldn't have known of any public forums that are happening, for example, I heard there was like a 10-year one in the, like recent holidays or something, but I heard about that like the day before, when I already like had something to do, so it was kind of, we don't get told that, like even on the youth council, like we don't get told at school, I don't know there's a public forum, I genuinely didn't know that was a thing that we could go to, like I thought that was only for like adults and stuff, so...
It's very helpful. Very helpful, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Also, that often are during the day, while we're all at school.
Of course.
So, that makes it, you know, difficult to get out of school for distance.
Great, excellent, thank you.
So, could I just note that the actual councillors today, we wrote them a letter to these schools to get approval for them to be here.
Thank you for making the sacrifice. I'm sure it took some arm twisting. Councillor Vincent Pope?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We've just been through a pretty extensive consultation, public consultation process about our 10-year budgets, which led to some decisions that will change the shape of Dunedin. And you will enjoy or not, depending on what they are. Obviously, it'd be really desirable if we could engage, you know, sorry, your age cohort was notably absent from, and the two above were notably absent from those submission processes and discussion processes. So, provided we get decent information to you about the key issues and the rest of it, do you think it's realistic to expect people from your group, groups to be engaged in those sort of processes? Provided that it's at a time that suits your other commitments and so on?
Yeah, so I am from the Action Committee, which is the 18 to 24-year-olds. And we did a little bit with the 10-year plan recently. And went and had discussions with students on campus. And most students hadn't heard of the 10-year plan, didn't really know about the Dunedin City Council, obviously, because they're from out of town. But having discussions with them, they were all really interested and really engaged. So, I think it would be really cool if we could figure out a way of, like, kind of engaging the council with students on campus a little bit more, because there's definitely interest there, yeah.
Okay, so we also do have an annual process. So, it would be worthwhile trying to engage more and continue that conversation.
Absolutely.
This time. Thank you.
Just, just picking up on that, would it be fair to say that it would be easier to, it might be more effective to engage well in advance of that process, rather than waiting for it to come around and then figuring out what we might do?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Gary and then councillor O'Malley.
Thank you for indulging me, Mr Chair. So, I went into, or offered to go into all schools in Dunedin for the 10-year plan. Some schools turned me down, some I went into, some I spoke to senior students. It was very much up to the school how they handled that. I'm interested to know, because they were then responsible for disseminating that information, or sometimes I spoke to assemblies. I'm interested to know how, if that reached you or not, in terms of your senior students talking to you about it. Just, can I have a show of hands, see if you've heard about that? Yep, great, okay, thank you. And Kelly, I had a question for you. We were talking yesterday about waste minimisation, and I was making the comment that we often seem to approach it as students being the littlerers, rather than having an interest in waste minimisation. And I believe you, you have a real interest and often a lot of knowledge. How would we reach students? I mean, oh, you were saying it's the obvious place that I know our staff go through. But are there other ways in other groups within, within university where we could harness the interest of students in that particular area?
Yep, I definitely think through the departments is another good way. So, working with other volunteer groups, definitely finding particular departments that have that interest. The lecturers and the head of departments are really good at engaging with students. So, that's one way that's really good. The other way is just being on campus and having discussions with students. So, when we were doing that 10-year plan stuff, we literally just went into the link, which is a big open space, and just had a conversation with students and said, hey, do you know about this? So, just one-on-one discussions is also really good.
Thank you. Councillor O'Malley?
Just a comment at the last point, too. Students for Environmental Action came, did present to the 10-year plan, so we are a comment with them. To all of you, yours, you've got your own student bodies inside each of your own schools. Are you selected from that group, or are you selected independently from those groups?
So, you don't, it's not really through schools, like, the selection process. And if you want to go on it, then you just apply. And we mostly advertise through Facebook and stuff. But the schools that we do have representatives and we get them to talk in the student body. And like, if they think someone's really good, they might shoulder tap them or whatever. Also, there's a little bit on the first point about how do we get people from schools that we don't have. We make, in our selection process, we prioritise people from schools that we don't already have represented on the council. So, if, like, last year, we got around 20 applications from Otaka Girls, but like, none from Kakak Valley. But if we had got some from Kakak Valley, because we have no representation, we would prioritise them and their application.
Yeah, I was just chatting a bit about, like, the student councils that were talked about. So, the problem, problem is that it's just not actually a recognised form of, like, organisation. So, I don't know about the other schools, but for example, our student council's a popularity contest. Each class votes their representative, maybe like, two or three weeks into the school year. And it basically turns out who was, who was the person that's best at rugby and morning tea or playing fives at the war. They're, they're the ones that go up. And so, every couple of weeks, they go up and they get a free morning tea catered to by the school. And generally, two-year 13s are the ones actually doing something, while the rest of them are sitting around having a laugh. And so, the problem is that if, if there is to be, like, student council working with the youth councils, there actually needs to be a change in how the schools actually approach their own council systems, because they're basically figureheads at this point. So, there was a student council initiative to introduce a new school tie that was organised by one person. And one person talked to the teachers, talked to the principal, did all the processing. It was meant to be a whole group endeavour, but ended up being done by one person, because there's actually no cohesion going on within those councils.
The other thing that we have done is had a conversation with the Dunedin Secondary School Partnership here and invited their manager to meet with the youth council. And they are going to support the recruitment this year in terms of conversations with principals across the city and help improve the reach at that end.
Thank you. Councillor Elder?
Congratulations on being here. I was just wondering, do you have any forums where you can talk to youth? Like a Facebook page or a radio station or anything like that?
Yeah, so we do as much as we can to engage. We have Facebook pages, Instagram accounts, and we also promote those at the events that we do. So, we're trying to, you know, keep those going and build them up. At the moment, the Facebook page has only got around 500 likes and Instagram's less than 100 followers. So, it's not huge, but we're trying to build it up. Yeah, so we're also in the, in the stages of organising a big youth survey, so that we can get a kind of big, broad view of what youth think about various issues that relate to the youth council in Dunedin. So, that'll be later in this year, we'll ask as many people as we can, you know, a simple questionnaire that we can use to base our future things off.
Can I follow on that? Follow on from that. So, we recently consulted with the policy department of the DCC recently in order to work together to create the survey. So, we looked at the past, the recent opinion survey and found, so we're planning to look through there and pull, so there's currently data for 18 to 24-year-olds. In the surveys, we're planning to pull that out and focus our survey on 12 to 18-year-olds. Because we recognise that the whole purpose of the council was because there was a disconnect between the city council and what youth want. And so, this is a way for us to inform our decisions, because like, we recently ran a quiz night amongst other events, which worked really well. And so, we want to increase what, want to increase, I'm saying what the youth want, so we can tailor make what we do as a council to what the youth actually would want in Dunedin. And so, the, the grand plan is, once we, we're hoping for about 500 respondents. And preferably that can inform decisions that we make as a council. And then therefore, inform you guys as well on what we could do for youth in Dunedin. So, we're, we're planning right now to have a questionnaire that can be passed around to students in, like, form times in the 10 minutes they have at the start of the day at school, relatively short, relatively easy, that the teachers can go through and say, right, I'm going to this website and do it. And then if we get 50 to 60% of each school responding, that is a huge wealth of information that we can tap into. And then actually understand a whole lot more of what we can do as a youth council for youth in Dunedin.
Yes, thanks for your work. And the other thing is, the youth, all the party, youth vision, how have you found that process of, of, of talking about it and bringing it together?
It has been an interesting process. I mean, obviously, it's been quite a long one, from the hui that we held a few years ago through to now. But I think the Youth Action Committee has found it pretty rewarding. And we've appreciated being included on it. And I think there's a lot of passion within the Youth Action Committee to really make it relevant for young people. So, we're looking forward to, yeah.
Well done.
Councillor Wilson?
Thank you. Just looking at the information that came alongside the report today, and there's a whole lot of lists at the end above the vision statement, which are, are things that you'd like to see, I presume? They've got the coloured headings, wellbeing, education and employment. Have you got those lists there?
Those came from the youth hui we held last year. So, they're from 100 different young people, including some of these, some of our youth councillors, but also young people from across the city. So, what would make it a successful place to live for them?
Yep. And so, when we're looking at reports that may touch on these topics, I'm just wondering, I don't want to bombard you with more information than you guys want to get either, because there's too much information or not enough. Is it, would it be that when we know we've got reports coming to you, that we should be sending them through to you for some comment or some engagement? Or, I mean, the staff might do that, but we may ourselves want to get your feeling for that, especially as chairs and say, can we, on these sort of topics, this is sort of the ones that you'd like us to, is that how it would work possibly?
I'm not sure if our councillors know, but actually, there is a Youth Action Committee email and a Dunedin Youth Council email on our email system already. It can dialogue.
Does that go in one person or to the group?
Goes to each group, but you each have a person, don't you, that looks after that?
So, we have, I think we have two people at the moment who watch over the email. They're all shared with the group if it's relevant. It also counts for if you want to come into one of the meetings, if you have something to bring up with us, if you want our input on something, that would be really helpful. Just bring anything up with us, we're, we're happy to come and help, trust me.
And the other part of that, and is there one particular project that would show success and perhaps give greater engagement by others, that you could show some success with, that you would say you'd love to see get over the line in the next year? That we could help facilitate or get an understanding for?
I don't know about the others, but I can't think of one, because we're quite, like, at the moment still finding our feet. We're quite young. And so, I think a big project for this year is, as Elliot talked about, the survey. And then from those results, we can kind of tell you, like, is there something that youth in Dunedin really think needs focus or attention?
Yeah, I, I suppose, I, I was meaning, if there was one topic that we could, that we might be doing, that we could facilitate, that you were important to make sure that it's seen, yeah. Nope, not necessarily. No, that's fine.
I'm not sure.
I understand the survey work.
But like, anything, we're always happy to give our opinion. Like, recently, we had the DHB come in and talk to us and ask our opinion on, like, health, education and for youth and stuff like that. And it was really good to be able to, like, give our opinion and give feedback. So, we're always happy to do that, yeah.
I was just thinking, we've, we've got quite a big budget in, or looking at reviewing some of the playgrounds around Dunedin. And I was just wondering if you'd be keen to impart into that kind of strategy?
Well, I'd say, same, well, as the youth council, and I'm sure YAC as well, like, we are involved. Like, the whole point is that we're meant to represent the youth. So, if it is something that does relate to the youth in Dunedin, I'm sure we'd be happy to look over anything that you, like, you have prepared or offer feedback, because anything that we can do to improve how, like, the lives of youth in Dunedin, I think we'd be interested in helping out with.
Further questions? I just have one. The internet is full of old people trying to engage with young people and setting up a Facebook page to do it. Can I get a show of hands as to how many of you actively engage with that as a platform? Like, how, how many people would actively use Facebook on a regular basis? Right. Thank you, yeah, just curious. There's no further questions?
We, that's why we also, sorry, yeah, we, we, that's the thinking behind sending our Instagram page as well and also potentially Snapchat to engage, you know, and not every platform, because wherever the people are, that's what it will be.
Cool, thank you. Thank you for coming. I'm not ushering you out the door, but it was just helpful to get questions of those, of those reports. And thank you for your contribution. Are there any questions of staff around the paper that is before us? Councillor Vandertis?
Looking at option one, the recommended option, talks about disadvantages of operational support. And it says that there are some operational costs not yet identified to the umbrella vision. I can understand some of them. Can we have some rough idea of the quantum of the operational costs that have been identified?
We know that we'll operationally deliver this through current staffing. So, we know that cost in terms of the promotion of the, the vision itself. In terms of design, I've got a ballpark for that, that's not going to be very expensive. In terms of the promotion of it, we haven't pinpointed an operational cost yet for the way that we would promote the vision out across the city. As we've just talked about with the, both these youth groups, they've got great network mechanisms out through a range of ways. So, we can look at some fairly low-cost options, but we haven't bedded down a cost around promotion yet.
Right, but the cost that you say that you have bedded down regarding current staffing, what, what number are we talking about?
Oh, so we're looking at, it would be point five of our, so we currently have a staff member, community advisor, who supports both groups anyway, and it would increase that time focused on youth to about point five.
Of a dollar?
Oh, sorry, of, of that, so around about 45,000.
45,000, thank you.
Out of existing budget.
And which existing budget would it come out of?
Sorry?
Which existing budget?
Our community development and events budget.
Community development?
Operational budget.
Events, okay, thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm looking at page 54, which is on the summary of considerations. And I'm always fascinated by how it doesn't seem to have any implications for community boards, which is often what's written there. But I just wanted to ask Joy, if you're aware of the youth scholarships. Some years ago, we established a youth scholarship, two of them actually, on the Peninsula Board. And several other boards have taken that up as their way of engaging with youth, even though there aren't necessarily high schools in the area. Are you aware of that?
No, no, we weren't aware of that. I don't, I don't think it changes the vision, but I'm.
No, 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 I just wanted to.
No, we weren't aware, it's good to know, actually.
So, it was established specifically because there were no high schools and because that was a way to engage with, with students and assist them with, if they were doing, for example, it started off as a scholarship for outward bound and just with a little, with a deposit. So, it might be useful to note that.
Yeah, that's very helpful, because we often get asked how we can help individuals and we can't through our grant system.
And the amounts vary from board to board.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I have one. Were council to not support us being the umbrella organisation of the Youth Vision, Youth Charter, whatever its title winds up being? What would be the likely outcome of it? Is there, is there an orderly queue forming of other organisations prepared to take on that role?
No, I have put that out a number of times, that if other organisations would like to umbrella it, you know. But the consensus from this community stakeholders has been that it should sit here. I think if the council chose not to do this, I suspect this would probably perish somewhere and be something people remembered a few years later, that it happened and went away again.
And just following on from this, should this, should this proceed? Will there be, and the goals are laudable, but in terms of giving effect to it, what is the next stage in terms of a plan to make these things happen?
So, the next stage, and we've done no work on this, because we didn't want to preempt anything, is to work with both these groups and interested stakeholders to actually develop an implementation plan. So, how will we actually give more effect? What do we need to do to engage more stakeholders?
What do we need to do to engage more stakeholders? I was able to present to the Grow Dunedin partnership the other day and discussed it with them, they were keen to understand the role that this has, but also saw some opportunity to look differently at some of the things that the business sector might be doing in terms of young people, in terms of youth. So, the next stage for us is to say, let's get this developed up, an actual implementation plan, so we can say phase one will be creating more stakeholder engagement, promotion of it, both to youth and to adult stakeholders, and then part of that is the development of some guides or best practice or case studies to show particularly adult, you know, adults, business organisations, what good practice actually looks like, what engaging young people in a different way, or what being open as a youth, to youth as an organisation can actually look like, and kind of how to get there, and then working through with these groups to monitor that. We are, we've considered having some annual or twice yearly HUI, stakeholder HUI, where we bring in organisations, and they get a chance to say what they've been doing under this youth vision, or to model the youth vision, I guess, in a practical sense. So, we've already got a number of the agencies that are listed in the reports, saying they would act as the community champions for this as well, within their own sectors and in their own organisations, and we would also be looking as part of that implementation plan to them, saying how they would show this in practical terms.
Thank you, that's helpful. councillor Elder?
Actually, you partly answered that. My question was, given that we're not, you know, education providers, or social services providers, or on-the-ground providers of, to direct to youth, what do you see the term as umbrella meaning in that sense?
Yes, we clarified this quite a lot along the way with the organisations that we discussed this with, that we clearly didn't see that council should own this, that it should be owned by everybody, but umbrella ring really is defined as, I guess, being the primary champion, the place where we would hold a list of the signatories to this, to this vision, so people could sign up to be part of it, the place that monitors to say, well, how are we doing? Are we doing better this year? Are there these great examples collecting that information? I think there's a key role here in taking a bit of a leadership role within the community about providing good information to young people. There's a lot of information about what's available, but speaking with our groups, they don't always get that information, obviously, some of that happens from our own council as well, so how, and taking that sort of leadership role about identifying where those places are for information, and ensuring through our youth connections that that information is getting there, and then, as said, acting as a monitoring role, how well is this going? What do we need to do to keep it, to keep a focus on it? It's a really long-term sort of piece of work, I don't think we're going to see massive change in two years or even five years, but I think we, we had a discussion, particularly with the YAC around, it's a great starting point, it makes a real, it makes a real visual commitment to young people in our community. Thank you.
councillor Vandivers?
You mentioned just now, two to five years, this proposed option one with a forty-five-thousand-dollar-plus cost to ratepayers, is this proposed to be for just a one-year trial, or is it proposed to be ongoing?
I think, I mean, the costs that I've outlined to you is the current cost that we have for staffing, and so we would reprioritise where things were, so that staffing costs could be used that way.
But the question was...
As we go on, it would probably be, we'll need to look each year whether it needs that level, or whether with different partnerships happening and networking, whether that decreases or needs to increase, so I can't answer that question categorically today.
But I understand from what you said, that your understanding is that this half-time cost would be ongoing essentially?
There'd be some ongoing staffing costs, what I can't categorically say today is whether that would continue to be half-time, whether it might be, less as we go on or more.
Thank you.
councillor O'Malley?
Just to clarify and follow up from councillor Vandivers's question, you said earlier on that it's effectively coming under current operational costs, right?
Yes.
Right, so it's not increased council spending, it's redistribution inside your own group?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, I, we have talked with the YAC and the DIC, they've both allocated some budget within our operational budget about expending some of that into this to support that separate to the activities, so we're considering that too, so we're not asking for any additional funding. We'd certainly be, because we see this as a city-wide focus, we'd certainly be looking at other partnerships.
Thanks. councillor Vandivers?
Just to follow up, given that it's a redistribution, do you know where that would be coming from then?
So, most of it is the staffing costs that we have now, so our community advisor time.
Councillor Vandivers, councillor Vandivers, you've asked a question, I would appreciate staff being given the opportunity to answer it.
And, and the other part would be, as I said, at the moment, each of the groups have allocated some funding, and we had a discussion about whether some of the funding that's allocated for their activities, because both groups underspend, can be put into the, for, for next year, for the first year at least, so we're looking at about, I think it's about eight thousand dollars maximum that would be put into that.
You mentioned an underspend just now, and that it seems this is going to be coming from that underspend, is that what I understand?
No, I'm sorry, let me just clarify, both groups over the last couple of years have underspent the money that's tagged in, in the budget that we manage, so our operational budget has an allocation for each group, and last year and this year, those groups will underspend, yeah, last year they underspend, this year they will underspend. We don't think they'll be looking at the kinds of activities they want to do, we think there could be an underspend next year, so we're suggesting that, in terms of making a commitment to this, which is partnership commitment by the Youth Council, the Youth, the YAC and the DCC, that some of that funding could go in to support the promotion and implementation plan of the youth vision, and that'd be about a maximum of eight, yeah, eight thousand dollars combined from both groups.
Okay, and the other thirty-seven thousand dollars would come out of what job currently being done?
So, the other, sorry, I'm, obviously, I'm not very clear, we currently have a community advisor who's full-time, so it's his time that we would up his time into the youth engagement work and reduce him of the other work.
Yes, my question was, what's the other work that's going to be reduced to, to, to go for option one?
Right, so, that would, he's been doing some work around, working with Madi and Pacific Community, so we would divvy that up around our own team to look at how we could put more time into this work, because we think this is a priority.
The distribution of budget lines allocated to council's strategic objectives being operational decisions made by the relevant managers, and as such, that appears to be what's happened here, regardless of whether any individual councillor might have a grievance. Any further questions? Oh, sorry, I had you down, councillor Elder?
Yeah, I guess, I guess just in, I agree with what councillor Organs just said, I think this is priority work, and I think it is important work. My probably concern though is, is there a risk that your staff will be stretched if we do this and don't allocate a budget? And my concern is, I don't assume any of the work your people are doing is unimportant work, and so is there a risk that something might not be done that is still important, or is, perhaps that's a better way of phrasing?
Yeah, I mean, I think our, our community advisors' staff are quite stretched anyway, but I, I suppose, to be honest, I don't want money to be the reason not to do this.
But there's nothing that's going to drop out the bottom that should be being done, in your opinion, that's not a risk?
No, I don't, I don't think so, I think we'll continue doing the things that, that we should be doing, that are high priorities for the city at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? No. What's councillor Benson Pope?
Moved councillor Benson Pope, seconded councillor Gary, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think this is an area that needs attention and needs resource, we've struggled for a long time with communications with our wider community, and as I said earlier, it is more than visible that several cohorts of the, the age cohorts of the city are not involved in a lot of our decisions. They may be more involved in some of the stuff we'll be talking about at the next meeting, in terms of feedback on the optogen activities, for example, and clearly, there are alternate communication mechanisms that reach different groups in the community, and I think we need to work on that in a meaningful way, in a timely way, so that we don't drop hundreds of pages on people and expect a comment, but it would be good if we could come up with mechanisms to involve more of our younger residents in the decisions that affect them now and will affect them into the future.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Gary?
Thank you, mister chair. In my experience, young people have a great deal to offer and a great deal of knowledge, and are often more knowledgeable than those of us around this table about some aspects of life, and I would certainly welcome the input of young people. It's been my experience, as I've gone into school several times on several council matters, that I'm always made very welcome, and students are always eager to listen and respond, and during the time of the ten-year plan, when I sat down with, was, not always senior students, but often, they would have some amazing ideas, and I found that extremely heartening. If we want a vibrant city, a truly vibrant city, we need to include our young people in our decision-making and feedback as we go forward, so I will have great delight in supporting this motion, and I look forward to seeing you again at council meetings.
Further speakers? Oh, sorry, councillor Elder?
I just want to congratulate you for your hard work on this, and look forward to your increased participation in our council decision-making in lots of areas, because you've got great ideas and you've got great energy, and so, congratulate, congratulations, and looking forward, again, to seeing more of you around the table, at public forums or contributing to strategies.
Thank you. For mine, just briefly, I'd like to speak to the, the youth vision itself. I was fortunate enough to sit on the governance body for the South Dunedin Social Sector Trial, from the ashes of which this work has come, and one of the notable things about that, as I arrived at the first meeting and looking around the table, was that there was a complete absence of young people, that were to be talked about, rather than talked to, as they say, you know, about us, without us, as we sat around in very paternalistic fashion, stroking our chins and furrowing our brows about what to do about the feckless youth in our community, without really going out and talking to them about it, and I think that was a huge shame. I think that there were positive outcomes certainly from that work, but I think that whole process could have been greatly enriched and been far more effective, had it involved the community that it was purporting to serve in a more constructive fashion, so I'm pleased that that voice has been heard in a far more constructive and significant way in the development of the youth vision. The goals here are fantastic ones, and all entirely consistent with council's own strategic priorities and strategic ambition, it's about making sure that each group, and are supported by council to achieve the goals that we have, that we have set for ourselves. I too welcome greater levels of, of engagement from the assorted throng here today, and thank you for coming and joining us, but again, here we are waiting for you to come to us at times that suit us and in a forum that suits us, rather than going out and doing things on your terms, and that's a challenge for us to address really between now and our next significant engagement work towards the end of this year, as we go through the annual plan process and the waste minimisation management plan stuff, which I know has, in which I know there is a great deal of interest among young people in our community, those gathered in particular, so I thank you for so graciously giving up your afternoon, those of you who had to be excused from classes, and the rest of you for, for doing this work and doing some of the, the heavy lifting for us in terms of engaging with young people, and it's behoved on us to give you greater opportunities to be able to do that in a useful way. Councillor Benson Pope, your right of reply? I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against?
A division.
A division has been called for.
Aye.
Councillor Benson Pope?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Vandivers?
No.
Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
Councillor Orgens?
Aye.
Carrie and I?
Aye.
Thank you. Class dismissed. No, we'd be in fear of being in court for the following, for the subsequent subcommittee meeting. It does bring us to item eight, items for consideration by the chair, are there any matters? Councillor Wilson?
I appreciate, and it's subsequent to what's just happened, that decision, we, and I also appreciate the staff workload in this area, and I'm just wondering whether we should be taking more of a lead within our councillor and ELT meetings, to actually have an item where we can identify things that we should be directing, to be liaised more closely with, in a targeted way, rather than us potentially haphazardly going off with information to the Youth Action Council, if we could put that as an item, or somehow making sure that we highlight in our own thinking at those meetings, things that can be constructively...
Whether that's through that mechanism or the summary of considerations, or coming up with some useful way to make sure that they're engaged in things that are of interest to them?
Indeed, and I think that's a challenge that, aside from the report today, that we should be taking some ownership of.
That's fine, we'll...
Under your leadership.
Thank you. We'll continue on. There being no further items, I'll call the meeting to a close. Councillor Benson Pope has signaled a five-minute adjournment before the planning and environment meeting. Thanks, everyone.